Yeah, I'll be the guy at the tech.
Yes, that totals 27.
Tech guy.
It's like the longest minutes.
Shut off my noise. Alright, so we're six o'clock, ready to go. Let's see the pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we got everybody here some corner was good to go. Okay, the regular agenda, we're gonna table number 10. Want to understand and then any other changes?
No, no other, just table 10.
Okay.
We'll remove it.
Anybody else have any other corrections or changes? You wasn't gonna accept a motion with that one change.
Motion could agenda.
Second.
Brian made a motion, Chelsea did a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Consent agenda, any last minute changes on there, Brent, do we need to be aware of anything? Anybody have any questions on it?
No, I just want to state that the detail and the information provided in the report is just is excellent.
Yeah.
To see, it's easy to read, very understandable.
The fund balance report is actually quite hopeful. That's a new report that you guys started generating, right?
That one we do at the end of the year, or after it closes out. You have to do that after the end of the new year. So after the 2020, when the funds are closing out.
Also, it's only just due through December 31st.
Yeah.
Okay, I missed that.
Yep. I mean, actually it shows Schedule Fund Day, day 131, but.
That's what I was thinking, it was a monthly.
It's reflective of 1120, 21.
Is Becky Plonan updating, or producing that every month, or?
I'll discuss it with her.
Okay, I mean, if it's possible, that's great, because I like how that's laid out.
Okay, any other questions, otherwise I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Okay, Dave makes a motion. Brian does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Alright, council minutes from last go around. Anybody see anything on there that got missed or?
Make a motion to approve minutes.
Chelsea makes a motion.
All second.
Sarah does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries, the special meeting that we had.
If there's anything around that, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes from the special meeting.
Dave makes a motion, they get a second.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay, public comment, anybody got anything they want to talk about tonight? Use the microphone, please.
I wasn't able to listen to the Zoom meeting of the special.
Say your name, so we don't.
I'm sorry, this is Stephanie Landstrom. I wasn't able to listen to the Zoom meeting that was recently held for the special meeting. So just wondering if you could speak to what the special meeting was about.
Lucas, I'll let you.
The special meeting was just for a lawsuit that the city was involved in and the opposing party submitted a motion to dismiss that lawsuit. It was in regard to an assessment appeal for the Cub Creek Development, which is Water Street Sewer Improvement District 2019-6. So that's what that was for. Basically, we needed consent from the city council to go ahead and get that dismissed, or agreed to dismiss that lawsuit. So that's what that was for.
Okay, anybody else have any other thing?
Chris Silt, I'm in the Adelman addition. You probably know me and my wife, because we've gone around a few times already. I'm not here to speak for the development, for my property only, but I own the lakefront property in the development. There is no drainage, year round. So I'm here to ask, what are we gonna do about it? I have standing water on the street. Three sides at least, year round, depending on where my neighbor pumps, if he pumps to the front or to the back. My driveway is starting to crumble, it's porous, it's heaving. Sarah can attest, she actually helped me move water and ice yesterday. So what's gonna be done? You can visibly see that the curbing is lower than where the drainage ditch starts. And there is so flat, nothing will flow on the grass or anything in the back. So what are we gonna do about it?
Jim, we've talked about this before, right?
About what is at length, we should propose a project to direct this, and here we sit every spring and every fall.
Okay, so, sorry to interrupt, but, okay, so Jim, your words on this. You proposed this humongous piping project in there, and your words, there's no guarantee it would work. So why would we approve that in our development? If there's no guarantee it would work.
It needs storm sewer, that subdivision needs storm sewer.
I agree.
And that was a way to retrofit an existing surface drain subdivision into storm sewer. And we had the opportunity to do it with 76th Avenue, with a storm sewer being installed on that project, on Route 327. That was the time we went to do it, we put forth the project. It was expensive, for a small area, and it will visit now, so that's where we said, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think we're all here, I'm one of Chris's neighbors, and as he said, I was out moving ice with him. And I haven't been out there ever since he's done it, I know he's been battling it for some time, so. We have some other neighbors in our neighborhood that are affected by this. And I, I think that as a whole, it affects everyone, and as to whatever reason, due to some, some history there, previous entities that were involved. Some things got missed or got installed incorrectly, there's been a couple things that have happened since then. And I think that as a, as an individual and as a community, we're looking for maybe a second look at that to see if there's something that can be done at this time, that might be a little more economical and have a few more guarantees to it. To ensure that the water does flow. We didn't have those guarantees with the prior project, and we're thinking that there may be some ideas that could be pulled around. I know that one of the other neighbors, I believe, spoke to you today.
Yeah, I spoke with one of the other neighbors today. He has the idea he wants to bounce off of Jim and I to talk about what can be done. As for economical, I don't know how much more economical it'll be, it actually might be more expensive. We don't know until Jim and I sit down with him and see what he's, what he's proposing the concept, because this individual has an idea and he wants to bounce it off of engineering.
Then let's, let's wait till we make any more comments until you guys have had that discussion, because then right now, we don't know any more than what we knew a year and a half ago, or whenever, two years ago.
Chris, would you be willing to sit in on that meeting?
Yeah, I actually proposed it, I know who it is, I mean, we talked to it out in the street. I told them it should run right here, and like this, but it still doesn't fix the back part of the property, the addition.
I think that further discussion should be had.
Yeah, it needs to go further. We moved into this addition, and I'm not speaking for everybody in the addition, I'm gonna say we. We paid for drainage, we already paid for it. I'm, I'm not gonna accept paying another 20,000 in specials for something I already paid for. So we gotta figure out how it's gonna get dispersed around to whomever. So I have questions, so was there a plan that was submitted for this addition? Was it approved by the city?
Do you?
The, it was done privately, this was before my time, right at the beginning of my time. So it was done privately, it was done to plans and certifications, where they presented to the city and approved. I don't know, that was before my time, like I said, I came in on the tail end of it. The design engineer did survey it at the end, and did provide a certification that it did meet the overall design of intent of what the project was to be, a surface drained subdivision. So that's where they certified that it deviated a little bit from what the original plan was, but the overall, this overall concept and plan for surface drainage was achieved through the construction of those improvements.
I can tell you it was not achieved, because I'm living with it every day.
And I, I think we have several folks that have been there from early on that are having some troubles. A lot has happened since then, we know that some people put some landscaping in and things of that nature, so. I, I'd like to open it up for discussion, again, if we could set a meeting.
Yeah, I'll have a meeting, I mean, I just, I want to be able to enjoy my property, and I can't do that at this time. I don't want my property to continue to lose value, I mean, I'm actually looking to do some, some work on my house. I got an appraiser coming, I can't have a water mess in front of my house, or on the side of my drainage ditch, coming halfway up my backyard. I just lost value, so.
Well, let's have this, let's have this meeting, then, you guys could look and see if we can find something, if either it's more economical or it's not. At least, at least we know where we're at, we'll start making some progress that way, because right now, we don't know. Other than what we've been told, what, two years ago, Jim?
Longer than that.
It's been going on.
It's been going on.
I'm just saying, we talked about it, we came up with a solution, it got shot down, so we didn't know really what to do next. Now, if we got an option, let's get it on the table and see what we can do.
Thank you, we'll, we'll take action with it.
Okay, anybody else got anything they want to present? One, one's going twice. Okay, we'll move on to the sheriff's report.
Evening, everybody. Happy to be back, I've missed the first couple months of the year, I was a little with a leg injury. And I have pneumonia, so it's not, if I cough, don't worry. It's not that, it's.
Other than that, you're doing just fine, right?
It's just pneumonia, a torn quad muscle and pneumonia, everything that, I'm great. Deputy Keller prepared this, I only returned a week ago, today was like my fourth shift back, so I'm not too familiar with too much that happened last month, I kept an eye on things, but I'll scroll through his paragraph this month, we experienced 117 calls for service. Due to lower call volume again this month, deputies were able to provide traffic enforcement along Wall Avenue, the four-way stop at Wall Avenue, Main Street, as well as other areas of interest. There were no crashes this month, and night parking seemed to be much better overall. On top of the night parking, Deputy Keller's been on nights, his first couple months in town here, and he's been a hound for night parking. He's, and, and I'm not afraid to admit, he's better than me, he's probably done more night parking enforcement in the last two months than I have in two years. So he's, he's, he's doing very, very well with that, so, and that, apparently is improving very much, so, and I can attest to that when I come on at 6:00 AM and there's, parking's cleaned up. Call types that are a little elevated on this compared to usual, alcohol-related calls is four, drug-related is six. Lot of those drug-related calls, one was like a juvenile complaint where a man found some weed in her son's room. The rest of them are all personally used stuff found on traffic stops and arrests and stuff like that. Again, that's attributed to Deputy Keller, you're gonna see some pretty high numbers with him at nights, he's, he's a, he's a Cole Thompson type, if you remember Cole. He's big on the enforcement of that stuff and, and very good at it, so. Does anybody have any questions for me or anything?
So you said the call volume has gone down a little bit, too?
Yeah, usually we're about 130 to 150 calls every month, and these calls, just a reminder, they don't involve self-generated calls, like COP, we call it, where we go out to businesses and say hi to people, stuff like that, or building checks at night, where we go around and put building, building cards in people's businesses and say, hey, we checked your doors, and everything was secure. We don't count those, so this number's a little lower than usual, but those don't have to count every month, but.
Assuming, because it was very cold for a couple of weeks.
That was my.
Yeah, it was very, very cold, and that's probably our deputies not wanting to get out and do stuff at 3:00 in the morning when it's 40 below. I can't blame them.
It would be nice if we could keep the call volume down for you next month as well, but I have a feeling it's gonna be nice and warm this week.
Yeah, I go, I go on nights in April here, so I'm anticipating some people getting a little wild as it gets warmer here, which is my job, I suppose, so. I'll take that. Another note, like I said, I was gone the first two months, I don't have the hours numbers for February yet, because it just ended. As you guys know, our obligated hours to our contract is 320 hours, between the two deputies, 160 for both of us. Without me here, I was a little worried that our other deputies wouldn't be able to cover, you know, their busy other places, but we actually hit 380 hours in January, so the other deputies filled my shoes and then some, so greatly appreciate them for that.
Guys have any other questions? Well, welcome back, I'm glad you're feeling better.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to Tera Gardens, Barrett, you got this one?
Yep. So this application is just a second reading, this is a follow-up to a zone change application for the Tera Gardens Third Edition Platte. Zone change from A agricultural to R6, high-density residential, and PF public facilities, no changes have been proposed, and staff recommends approval.
Yeah, so there's been no changes since the first reading.
Correct, yep.
So anybody else got any questions on that? Went through it on the first reading, so.
So during, during the time, just for clarification for residents, between the first and the second reading, if there are changes, are they related to any types of responses from other residents or anything, or are they more related to something you've worked out with a developer or the person putting the development in, is that the potential?
Typically, most of the changes we see occur from the first reading. If the city council feels that a more, a different zone designation would be more appropriate, then we'll bring that forward to the second reading. If there's public comment, and it's determined that with that public comment, there's agreement that a better zoning designation should apply. And typically, that'll be brought forward during the second reading, so that gets approval.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, otherwise we're gonna accept a motion to accept the second reading.
So.
Chelsea makes a motion. Dave does a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries, 10 is tabled, we'll move on to 11, Barrett, you got that one?
Yep, if you don't mind, this will be two action items, first will be a second reading of the zone change, and then the second will be a resolution declaring petition for improvements. So for second reading, this is similar to the last application, last item. Again, second reading on the zone change, this one does have changes proposed to it that came about during the first reading, so. Lot 2, Block 2, that was the artificial lake lot that's being proposed to PF Public Facilities instead of A agricultural. And then Lot 2, Block 7, that was the church lot, instead of, I believe, is R6 or R1RE is being proposed. And then all the other zone change proposals still hold. C2, Town Center Commercial, MU mixed use, PF Public Facilities, and R6 High Density Residential. Then, this staff hasn't received any comment, and we recommend approval.
With those changes that they requested, with those two zones?
Correct, but with the changes.
Those were the ones we discussed in the last meeting.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Okay, accept a motion then with the said changes.
So moved.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, give you a second.
All second.
Sarah does a second, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, does that cover both the rezoning and resolution?
Nope.
Or is that a separate?
No.
And I'm gonna hand it over to the city attorney, Lucas Croker.
So Mr. Mayor, the developer filed a petition for improvements for this one, so this resolution declaring petition for improvements has been received as the next action item, just saying that the developer requests that the city create an improvement district and then fund those improvements using special assessments. So at this time, we're not creating the district, it's just saying that the city is receiving that petition for improvements.
Good. Normal procedure we go through.
Yeah, I'm curious, though, why are they requesting this help from the city? Did they not do those improvements on their own?
Typically, developers in Horace request that the city create an improvement district and pay for those improvements with the special assessment process or special assessment method. To do that, the developers are required to file this petition via the Sentry Code.
And do we do that on every development?
Every development that the developer requests that that be done, it gets presented to the city council, who then makes a decision on whether or not the city will create that improvement district and go through the special assessment process.
We have in the past for new developments.
Yeah, I don't.
So they could do it themselves, they could do it themselves, if they choose.
So in your example, your guys' development, what's done, where the developer privately, correct the developer privately paid for it? Done with all of that, all of that cost?
And Maple Lake Estates started that way, but then they switched to special assessment method.
The big difference would be that the cost that they have to incur then would be in the lot price versus now with the special assessment, you have your lot price and the portion that's on your taxes that would be paid by all lot owners.
And that's where the letter of credit comes in?
Right.
They would probably still need that letter of credit, it's just, because they're accepting that debt load themselves versus the letter of credit. And that's, the letter of credit is what protects us as a city from that special, that amount that's being financed.
I'm asking because I have a lot of questions that have come to me about special assessments recently and what the process is for opening the district, and why we open the district, and if there's, you know, federal funding or grant money or anything like that, that can be.
So typically with these new developments, the cost is just on the new development, unless there's like a regional component like stormwater, then it's the, a larger area, which this development shares with the Cub Creek Development. A more regional component on the stormwater part of it, otherwise, the cost for streets, sidewalks, sewer, and all that is tied to that development.
Thank you.
But, yeah, and again, this is just saying that the city received that petition. Next meeting, that's when we'll get into the, okay, here's how big the proposed boundary is for the improvement district, and then the city will decide whether or not, at that point, it wants to move forward with creating that district.
Yeah, so basically, the action here is just to, that we, we got the resolution.
Requested the petition of the minister.
Right.
I agree with that, I wanted to publicly make a clarification surrounding the process. Even though I myself am subject to special assessments and am familiar with the process, I've received a lot of questions about it, and so thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, and, and so. So if this, if the city didn't receive this petition for improvements, the city would have to do a resolution of necessity for a project, and that gets published in the paper, and then that puts people on notice that the city is doing this project. But with the petition, it's typically the landowner that has a majority of the land petitioning for it, and they're acknowledging that the cost of the project is going to be assessed against their land.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
I was gonna add too, not to jump into too much, but at the next meeting we have, addressing the, creating the district, this district will have a little portion, or by Casey's, that gets a connection to Ciggoard 17. So there is just a little area that is impacted, that's outside the development for your street improvements. And drainage in that area, so, I just want to make sure, so nobody is surprised that it does have a little area that is outside of it, it's not many parcels of property, but we do, we will have that reflected in the proposed district boundary next, at the next meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, so with that, we still need to make a motion to accept.
Move that we accept the declaring petition for improvements?
Dave makes a motion. Chelsea does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, Barrett, you got number 12?
Yep, so as you recall, two weeks ago, you had that gigantic ordinance amendment application. This would just be the second reading that would finalize that amendment to the zoning ordinance. The only change that was made was to Section 17.5.3, where it needed a date to enact the section. So March 1st was added, if approved tonight, that would put the section into effect. Staff hasn't received any public comment, and we recommend approval with the change that was a modification that was added. Did you correct?
I think I just want to make sure that we're, because this is the second reading, and some people may be hearing it for the first time, this was very much reviewed numerous times by our planning and zoning group, and debated through numerous meetings and all of those things, so it is not just a quick read, this is something our planning and zoning did significant work on to improve these and remove a number of differences between different areas of the zoning and those types of things, so. Again, significant amount of work and feedback that was provided to them.
Russ, would you concur on that?
Yes, in fact, we actually removed one of the proposed sections when it came up, because we couldn't get consensus of agreement of how we should do what was being proposed. So these were all things that we agreed on and announced.
Okay. Yeah, and just backing up what Dave said, there's been a lot, a lot of time put into this, so. Any other comments, questions? Look for a motion to accept the second reading.
I'll make that motion.
Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Take it as a second, okay, all in favor, go.
I was just gonna say, good work, you guys.
Yep.
I know that was a tedious process, sitting with Taylor Lando, and it was, it was impressive seeing the group work together.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. For our improvement district, Jim, you got that one?
Yes, on the dinner day, we have the resolution of governing body as part of the water project, the water replacement project, to fund the local portion of the project that's not being funded by the State Water Commission, we are applying for North Coast State Drinking Water state revolving funds. And as part of that, the application, we have to have a resolution of governing body. Basically, what this states is that you authorize the mayor, it's hereby authorized to execute and file an application on behalf of the City of Horace with the North Coast Department of Environmental Quality for a loan to aid in the construction of the, the project. So this is a pretty standard form, we've done on all of our SRF projects prior, it just keeps this moving. Our plan is to get the application for the SRF portion of this project in this week to the Public Finance Authority and the DEQ, so they can start their review of it. When the State Water Commission meets again in two months, we'll touch more on that in, in 17, they will be going for them for the construction funds, but right now, we're gonna include only what we have from the State Water Commission right now. The rest of it will just be on the budget sheet as a loan, and they said we can update that for both programs when we know more. But we want to keep the ball moving on it, just to keep it in front of it, so.
Yep. This is a prerequisite for us getting on that agenda for the, if, me?
No, this is, this is separate from the Water Commission. So the State Water Commission's a cost share, and the local portion of that we funded with this. And this is just a portion of that application, this grants the city.
But they need to see that they leave acceptive this, that we're accepting responsibility for that portion that they're not gonna fund, yes, correct.
So to clarify that, that the remainder amount of this quote low-interest loan that we would get, the goal is not to assess this to our residents, it is the, the water rates would be able to cover this and be able to pay back that debt.
Correct.
Because the, basically, it's 60, generally 60, 40 is the going percent, where 60% comes from the state, 40% comes from us on our own.
For this type of project.
This type of project, correct, and then this low-interest loan would allow us to pay that back over time through our water rates.
Water rates.
If there is anything that, that would, we have other potential funding sources, special assessments would be the last, 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 last resort.
Right now, the goal is that would be a low-interest loan that we can pay for with water rates, which is as it should be.
Correct.
Right?
It should have been, okay.
But this project is specifically around the connection to 2020-6, is the connection to Castro Water.
Is 2020-7, this is, you're backwards. So this is for the replacement of Horace.
So this is a line replacement?
Yep.
Okay.
You have a question?
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned with water rates, would that necessitate another increase in water rates to cover this portion, the city portion? Of improvement?
There is another increase that will need to happen when we get connected to Castro Water, because the, the buying in bulk from Castro Water is more expensive than us producing our own, so the rates will have to be adjusted. Again, once that make, connection happens, but we've been making changes so that we can absorb this kind of, you know, the low-interest loan aspect, and that was a prerequisite for the changes that have been made up to this point. And now, it's, it's an adjustment again for buying the water from Castro Water, which is something we have had in the past.
And it's something we had planned to do in January 1, but we preferred that till after this project was completely done.
To, to give you a comparison, would be if you look at like Electric Utility. Electric Utility is a private enterprise that all their operations and maintenance and capital improvements are included within their rate. Intentions are to have the rate adequate to where it is able to be self-sufficient, and does, in the future, doesn't have to rely on special assessments unless there's a major improvement. Castro Water, for example, they do that, but if they have a major improvement, or new infrastructure, like a new development, or something else, you know, some other major project, they may special assess that out. But for the smaller projects, they don't assess those out, it's built into the rate. And that's what we're trying to work towards, to be able to cover those expenses, instead of having to do special assessments frequently, have the rate usage, be able to pay for that, just like you would Electric Utility. Electric Utility, you don't get an assessment, that's a private enterprise, they don't do that. What they do is they build it within their rate, and their rate covers their cost. Our rate is not at a point to. Uh, our rate is not at a point where we'd be able to do that. When we connect to Castro, we have to be able to still cover our costs. But then we also need to be able to cover the cost of these projects. And that's, that's why you see those rates like Castro has a different, totally different rate than what we do, so.
And the goal is, would be that, in essence, we standardize the rates that both residents pay in Horace for Castro Water and residents that get water from Castro Water. So when we, after this switch over, essentially the, the goal would be the rate would basically be the same.
They'd be very similar, so.
Everybody would have Castro and everybody would pretty much pay the same.
Right, exactly.
I can speak to that because I'm outside of Horace property even though I'm in the city. And my water rates for Castro are higher than what the people in the city pay, even with the most recent increase that they took. So the goal was to try to include this new infrastructure and get everybody on the equal playing field so that we have a way to cover everything. Which is really exciting, but, uh, to some seems like a burden, but really when you look at the, the total, it's, it's not exorbitant by any means.
When, when you compare our current rate with almost any other city in North Dakota, we are significantly lower than many other cities. And till even just a couple of years ago, a couple of years ago, we actually had one of the lowest rates in the country, uh, at that time. And we weren't able to even cover all of our cost operations and maintenance. And even now, we're, we're not really doing a whole lot on the maintenance side, it's focusing on operations. That's what we're focusing on, so.
So we were subsidizing people that were already paying full price for Castro to fix water lines for people that were getting this reaching water.
Yep.
Yep.
So.
Which quality is what we're also trying to fix.
We need to do something about that.
Okay, so anything else on thirteen, Jim? Okay, any other questions, guys, on that one? I mean, need to move this, keep moving this along, we need to get this done, so. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion approved.
Okay, Brian makes a motion.
Second.
Chelsea does a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries, so let's keep things moving there, Jim. You got the next one on fourteen too, even though we have discussed it already, but.
Item number fourteen is, uh, district number twenty twenty dash seven, that's the connection to Castro Water. Same thing, we apply to state water commission, the difference there is it's a seventy-five fifteen. Cause it's a water supply project, so it's got a little bit more cost share on that.
Say the number again, you said seventy-five, twenty-five, okay. Somebody could further pick up the other ten percent.
But they did approve for seventy-five twenty-five?
Of the preliminary.
Okay, but still, that's, still.
Yep, so those projects are typically at seventy-five twenty-five, so. Uh, otherwise it's the same, we're gonna go after the local share with state revolving fund, same form. Same form, just changed six to seven in the description.
Yep. Out of curiosity, do you know what the interest rate that this state revolving fund has right now?
Two percent, it was one and a half percent with a half a percent administrative fee for a two percent effective rate.
Which is very, very low.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Brian makes a motion, Dave does a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries, Brenton, you got fifteen.
Okay, the next one here, I'm gonna just introduce a touch base and then work with council member along, cause we've been working together on this item here. Uh, the two, two-year tax abatement for new homes, what this covers is basically the first, if you have a new home construction, it covers the first hundred fifty thousand evaluation of the property, which is a two-year tax abatement. And that's for basically all their taxes, school, district, city, uh, county, across the board. This has been, this is a program that is, uh, that is, the cities are allowed to take advantage of, that has been approved by the legislators. Um, this is a program also, I don't know if you have, yeah, you do, uh, which we show is actually used in quite a few of the cities across. It's actually done across the state, but we look just in our metro area here, just to give you examples, the vast majority of them do the full hundred fifty thousand abatement. Uh, the only two exceptions are Cassington and Riley's Acres, so. Uh, this does have some impact on the community, however, we still do have revenue that comes into the city when those new homes come in. Well, Dave touched base on that too. Uh, but what we'd be propose, what we're proposing from the staff side, in order to be consistent with the rest of the area. And also due to this program that's been around for many years, it isn't just something that came around a couple of years ago. Uh, we'd be proposing that this would cover fiscal, or calendar years twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. So it'd end December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And, um, it's a cover of the first hundred fifty thousand valuation, and Dave, to expand on the other two.
So, uh, first thing I'd like to point out is on the slide right there that you're seeing, that this two-year abatement does not reduce any special assessments or grain taxes. This is only tax, property taxes are paid as you reference to city, state, um, schools, fire, park, okay? Um, we referenced the other cities, if you can go to the next slide, please, Brian. What is the impact to our city? Is, uh, based on our current mill rates, a individual who gets the hundred and fifty thousand dollar abatement to our city property taxes, it's not talking about parks or, or fire or anything, is an impact of four hundred and eight dollars and twenty-four cents to us in a year. Following year, another four hundred and eight, using, assuming the same mill rates, uh, for a total of eight hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-eight cents. Again, to reiterate, the special assessments that are included in each of the, in, uh, a person's taxes are not deferred or not reduced. Those are included and they continue to have to pay them. This just is a reference to show that all of a, a residence, new resident who comes with a new house, the assessments to their local development, which are, can range from thirty to forty thousand dollars, plus any types of regional ones. This is just a reference to some of the, um, developments that were assessed for the SSL, the roundabout and seventy-six improvements. This is not a full list, I'm just referencing the most ones that were occurring recently, which is Cub Creek, Southdale Farms, Lost River, Terran's and Maple Lakes. All got the same assessment, so they're paying for not only their local, but their regional portions as well. And if you move to the last slide, this is where the big, uh, information is, is that we are losing eight hundred and sixteen dollars, quote unquote, that we're not getting for two years. But for any new home that comes into our city, these are the costs that the citizen and/or developer pays, excuse me, not developer, builder pays to bring that home in. First is a permit fee, this is based on a three hundred thousand dollar home, which is, tends to be average right now. Permit fee of eleven hundred and fifty dollars. Our plan review fee, these are current rates, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. They pay a thousand dollar street deposit, um, that is to, uh, go against if there's any damage to the streets that they developed, that a builder or anything pays before, uh, does before person takes, uh, occupancy of the home, so they will get that back if they do not damage the streets. We charge a seven hundred and fifty dollar water hookup fee to hook up to the city water system. That covers costs such as a water meter and administrative costs, those types of things. We do a seven hundred and fifty dollar hookup for the sewer. Um, but if they're on Castro Water, again, they wouldn't have that hookup. And then again, the two percent sales tax for all the materials that are brought in to build that house. And assuming a forty percent material cost to build a home, which I think is kind of low, um, cause there are other charges related to building that house, a lot of labor, those types of things, that's twenty-four hundred dollars. So a house of three hundred thousand dollars brings in six thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars, take a little bit off. So if we reduce by eight hundred and sixteen dollars for the two-year abatement that we have provided, um, we still took in upwards of almost six thousand dollars. Take a thousand off of that, so four thousand dollars, or five thousand dollars.
So what that does not show also is the property taxes that are collected.
Correct, it's only.
Only a hundred fifty.
Yep, that, this is just the, the amounts that quote unquote to show before the, before the house is even occupied. These are the costs that we as a city, um, are paid, are paid to us as a city. And taking out that eight hundred and sixteen dollars, this is the amount that we still see before it is taken in. I think the big thing too is that this is not a benefit to the developers, this is not a benefit to the builders, this is a benefit to the homeowner. This goes directly to the homeowner and covers a little bit frame of some of their, their costs to come into the city. Again, we are competing against all the other cities, cities in the, in the metro area, they're doing the same thing. And I truly believe that we're easily offsetting any of these costs that are, that are coming in from, uh, develop, a, a new, a new resident moving into our town.
Yeah.
So I'm free to answer any questions, I guess, that you guys have.
Yeah, you have others. They said it doesn't count for the property tax, we focused on just the city. Dollars coming in and out, obviously these dollars go into different pots or funds, I'd say. Like the sales tax goes in the sales tax fund, uh, it doesn't show the, how much we do pull in, like you said, property taxes for a year. If you wanted to look at what we'd have for first two years total, it would come up to that, for a three hundred thousand dollar house, it'd be six thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight. If the bill stayed the exact same, valuation stayed the exact same, all of that. We know evaluations fluctuate, so that gives you a ballpark of where it'd be the total impact on the city.
I think the other piece you wanted, you wanted, that when we discussed this too, Brent, is that somebody who's moving in this year and maybe takes, uh, ownership of their house, let's say by the end of the summer, we will have already had our tax equalization meeting, which comes up in the next month, which generally sets how much we are having an evaluation of the city. So they will pay some property taxes, but probably very little, we will not see most of them until a year later anyways. So even though they were in our city, say for a few months, three to four months, we don't always see all of that. It's kind of got a delay of almost a year. And this would then be the same thing, is this abatement would not happen till that next year anyways, because it would kick in.
Yeah, and like I said, this has been around for many years. Uh, I've had some folks tell me it's gone back, back into the mid-two thousands, so.
I can attest to, when I built my house in two thousand and five, it was available and I utilized it in two thousand and five.
Yeah, so it isn't a new program, it's been around for quite some time.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, like, this is a program intended to benefit the home buyer, not the builder as much. You know, builders, they appreciate it because they're able to show that for the buyer. But like I said, this is intended to benefit those new residents.
And the home buyer has to request it, correct? We tried to contact the county to find out how many are, of our last, in the last two years currently asked for it or were operating, and we weren't able to get that information back today. And we will try and get that information, but, you know, we're assuming seventy-five, eighty percent are asking for this, but not everyone.
That's it, they have to ask.
Yeah, they have to fill the forms.
The form that we have.
And they submit here or to the county and then it gets processed, they prefer, we prefer that it comes here. And then it'll go to the county and the county will process it accordingly, but.
And as a percentage, you know, the, the point is, is that this, as a percentage, this actually benefits those homeowners that have the three hundred thousand dollar home, much more than it does the, the builders that are making, you know, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollar homes.
Correct.
So, I mean, that, those, you know, cheaper homes are the, the people that we want to try and accommodate, to give them a better opportunity to get that home for themselves. So that's, that's kind of the goal behind the abatement program, uh, is to help those first-time home buyers and, and those lower income, um, home-built homeowners to be able to afford that home for the first couple of years.
So do you think people wouldn't build homes in Horace if we weren't offering abatements to them? I mean, we talk all the time, Horace is growing and we, we, it's outpacing any of our infrastructure or the best form of city. I don't know that I see the, the abatements necessary to learn with people to the city.
I, I, I feel that people would, it's, that's a significant dollar for some individuals and.
Offered to just new builders.
Just to new homeowners, yep.
Just homeowners, yeah.
But this isn't a new program, cause to go back in twenty sixteen, when I finally closed on my house, starting in twenty fifteen, I received a letter and I wasn't a new builder, so I had to make sure that they knew that I wasn't eligible for that. But I'm seeing some comments here that there are different people as, as far as sixteen years ago that had received this. So is this a new program? I mean, I'm told this isn't a new program, so why are we presenting this here, just to formalize?
We have to do a resolution every, every year, every other year, however long we make that resolution for. And then we have to provide it to the county saying, okay, new homes purchased within this time period are eligible for that program.
We're evaluating, we evaluate it every so often to make sure that we're, that it's still valid, that what we're doing is still what we wanna do. And that's why we have this discussion. You know, we are competing against the rest of the metro with this too, so that's.
I mean, when, I feel like, I, I got the tax abatement when I built my house five years ago. Um, I wasn't expecting it when I built, but I know that when you, um, when I found out I could get it, I got it, it was, it was great. I think when you first get into a new home, whether it's new or old, I mean, it's always a big adjustment financially. Um, and I think when you look at our neighbors, they're all doing it, there's a lot of money that goes to the county and to the schools that our residents would be kind of cheated out of, from everybody else in the, in the metro and beyond, getting these tax abatements for those big tax entities. So for me, I just, I feel like it's important for us to, um, treat these new home buyers, um, well and give them the fairness that they deserve compared to our, our neighboring communities. As long as we as a community feel like it's within our means to do so, I think I'd love to see people be able to use this opportunity.
Yeah, I do too.
But in essence, you're taking money away from the school district and the park district when you give us the payment for a few years. So the money has to, and I recognize it's just for a couple of years, but again, it's almost kind of like it's on the backs of the people that are living here.
No, because we're not, because we never said we had this money. That's the side of it, I, I, I don't get told that we've got fifty new homes and this is what we're gonna get until almost a year later as a council member. So our budgets are not based on these additional homes. So by later on, till I'm, so we only have a hundred and fifty, that's what we have the budget for. So we're not going out and doing extra things because we don't have this. And that's what I think the, that's what you're, you're stating, is that current residents here take on a bigger burden. But they're not, because we've got a significant dollar brought in before the house was built that offsets this. And then we also then have new residents that in two years will provide significantly more property taxes.
I guess that would be, I think they would still build regardless. And it didn't personally affect me, but I felt really bad when I heard about the property valuation adjustment, which I'm not speaking to whether it needed to be done or not, probably did need to be done. That was a really big jump for all of those homeowners in one year. Maybe would have been nice to look at something, maybe some sort of a phase in or abatement could have been done for some of those homeowners too. That's a big jump, big jump in value and then increased taxes for that.
Can we speak to that, some of the history behind why there was such a big jump? Because I had questions on that too, cause I saw a pretty substantial increase.
Well, basically. The, the best, the best resource for that is when we do have the tax equalization meeting, that occurs the second meeting in April. Uh, Paul Fercassi from Cass County, he is the area expert on all of that. And he'd be able to answer that very thoroughly. I'd give you a very, very high level of basically, uh, the property taxes, they, they just weren't, the, sorry, not property taxes. The property, uh, appraisals.
Valuations.
Valuations were not occurring, they fell behind. And that was not pushed historically. You have to be within a certain percentage or a certain range of the market value. And if you don't address that within a certain time period, then you have others, such as like the county or the state saying, hey, you need to fix this. You need to be within a certain percentage, I believe you have to have, I believe it, and like I said, Paul could elaborate this a lot more accurately than I can, so please don't quote me on it, is a certain percentage, I wanna say it was like seventy percent have to be within ninety or ninety-five percent of the market val, or the median values or aver, you know, the market value for that comparable. So they have some, their analysis they do and they determine how accurate you are. And then they'll do adjustments either across the board, like countywide, or they'll come in and say, okay, city, we really need to come in and do a more depth, in-depth analysis and look at all the properties. They went through the same thing in West Fargo, I wanna say it was about ten years ago or so, maybe even less than that, where they had adjustments that had to be made. And it was just like I said, it didn't happen in Horace for so many years. And it had, it, it was all sign catch-up. And that's why it was more painful is because it wasn't addressed for many years and then it was.
So how do we avoid that from, keep that from happening?
Basically you keep your appraisals current. The, the county keeps it current, which now that they have everything caught up, or they will have it all caught up here. You know, the, the one thing that would fluctuate is the market. If property values are higher, the market demands more, your value increases, then that's how the, you know, the county is keep, trying to keep up with that, so.
Change that was done was our assessments used to be done by a part-time person in the city, that the city hired. They were only doing new homes only and/or commercial, and we're not keeping up. Now that we have made the transition, that the county is doing the assessments and reviewing the assessments, which was a very reduced cost to us versus a full-time employee.
Right.
Um, they are keeping up, they have brought everything to the same level. And now they are the ones that will do any remodeling, all permits, they have all the permits, they will come in and review remodels, new homes, any of those types of things. Plus then they will go through the city on a, every two years, whatever it is that their process is to review everyone and/or do adjustments. So now everything across the board, if we give a three percent or four percent that the county chooses, that would be done for everyone. So now everything across the board, if we give a three percent or four percent that the county chooses, that would be done for everyone and would keep all the values going.
Good. I, I think there's a lot of questions. Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, I've, we've had coming to meetings for years. And Horace did go through a mandated uh across-the-board assessment many years ago because we hadn't been keeping up. And I think basically the state said fix it and they did a across-the-board assessment. Now, just for your information, my assessment went up over a hundred percent. And while it was shocking, I knew it was gonna come. Because what it meant was I've been paying, underpaying taxes for a lot of years. And I appreciate those years when I was underpaying taxes, but I knew it couldn't last.
I agree with that, but like I said, I'm getting, I'm getting appraisal coming after weeks. So what my appraisal comes at, I have lower than what you guys just called me out.
That would be during the tax equalization meeting. Then you, you could, you could, you are able, you get a letter in the mail that says your appraised valuation. And then it says on this date or contact the county tax equalization. And they can discuss with you and you can make your case. So if you had a recent appraisal, then you could say, hey, I just had this appraisal done. Here's what they found. It's lower. And they sit down and they go through it with you and they may make adjustments. If you do that before the tax equalization meeting. That makes it a lot easier for the county, cause they encourage people to talk. Last year, they met, I want to say over a hundred people. Met with them, actually there's a lot more now I believe, uh to go over their properties. Some properties they made adjustments, some they didn't. And like I said, if you have that data, you're getting an appraisal done here in next week or two. That is valuable information where you're able to show them, say, hey, I just had this done. Here you go. It might be higher. Your appraisal might be higher too. You know, it may say it's higher, it may be lower. Don't know.
Don't you think the schools coming to the area bumped everybody's property taxes? Not so much that they were underestimated, but now all you got are one of these floods of families coming into the area saying, we want a house. There's nothing else there, so that drove up the cost because there's competition.
I, I wouldn't be the right person to do that.
I would say that information, cause I, I went and protested mine as well and thought it was too high and they provided comparables that have sold within the last two years.
That's what it means, because everybody knew the school was coming.
Before the schools.
Everybody knew the school was coming. I've known the school was coming for five years.
There's not a tunnel for my house. I moved my house in.
They, they go, the comparables are by the size and all that type of stuff within the metro area and their information. Cause they, they had information to co- to counter it and it was all correct information. And I had mine, I had mine uh reassessed to do a refinance and it was actually, but not reassessed, excuse me, reappraised and was actually higher than their valuation, so.
I knew the school was coming five years ago, so I mean, you can't say that people just found out the school was coming. People were planning for it to come, which then brought up the prices of the houses. It wasn't so much that we were.
It's not just the schools, it's the metro area as a whole is growing. Um I have to provide it in my, but we added six thousand jobs in this region in the last five years.
The fastest growing regions are wherever you have a new school. It happened over by Davies and now it's happening over here. It happened to Cheyenne, you know, ten years ago.
Well, and they're using what's selling to create these values, so that's, I mean.
So what, what I, what I stress is, you know, at the tax equalization meeting, Paul is the expert, you know, the area expert of. When it comes to how that works, the property appraisals, he's the person to talk to. If you have a more recent appraisal. You contact the county's tax, tax equalization office. They're the ones to talk to on that. The timing for when to bring that up or say, hey, I have concerns about this is in mid-April. And like I said, when you get that letter in the mail from the county, take a look at it. If you don't agree with it, have a conversation with the county. Meet up with them, cause they're the ones that go back. They review it. They'll say, okay, here's the comparables. They will sit down with you and show you. What is comparable, what is not, or you know, what they're using for their comparison. They have all kinds of data there and that, they're the ones that I know the council relies on to be able to answer their questions when it comes to. How does all calculate, how it's all brought forward. Plus they're the ones dealing with it day to day. That's like, you know, I'm not a mechanic. I can't go and tell somebody, oh, this, this is what's wrong with the car, needs a whole new engine rebuilt. And say, no, you just need to change oil. I can't do that. So that's, that's where we have to rely on the experts that have that information and the, the first place to start is to talk with the county's tax equalization.
And we can do that. I mean, like I said, my wife's in the business. She said go back for at least a few numerous times. Was what they want on top. She had, we had to negotiate both of the last two years. But she's in the business, so she knows what's going on. Most people aren't, don't have that luxury. I mean, it's, it's kind of asinine what those prices actually went up. I mean, I understand what you're saying, that it was, it undervalued for so long and all that. I get it, you know, but you, that big of a jump. Forced people out of their homes, some people. Quite a few actually. I mean, I can, I, I don't know some personally, but through more than acquaintances and friends of mine. I can, I can tell you how many numerous people I believe who said I can't afford.
Okay, so um back to the tax abatement part here uh for the resolution. Is there any more comments or questions on that? This is, like I said, we're competing with the metro on this guys and I don't see any reason to change it at this point. So, well, somebody's got another question or comment?
Motion to uh tax abatement.
Okay, make some motion Brian in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Brent, let's talk about mosquito spray.
Mosquito spraying. One thing I do want to stress, I was gonna bring up here during my update, but I'll bring it up right now is. And the issue of Horace happens, it went out here. Uh it should have gotten mailed over the weekend or just before. Uh there is some interesting information about mosquito spraying back to control, how that works. It's a very informative, explains folks how this all works, how the spraying works, how the county works with that and how the city does too. What you see for this item is the proposal for, from airborne vector control. What we do every year is we try to get an agreement in place with airborne vector control. This is to be able to be capable of doing uh aerial spraying. It would be a very rare instance where we would do aerial spraying within the city. The reason why is because of the cost. However, we like to have that as an option within the city. So if we ever do need to do it, we can. The cost per application is nine thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars. So keep in mind, when other communities were doing aerial spraying, like last year, the year before. We were doing truck-based spraying and our numbers were right around ballpark or better than what they were doing. If you have a more aggressive, you know, aggressive truck-based spraying program, a lot of times you don't have to have that aerial spray. Also the effectiveness of the aerial spray could be hit or miss because of. You look at where some of the populations are in Horace, we have quite a few folks that live along the river. Where you have a heavier tree canopy, when you have aerial spray, comes from above, goes down obviously. Less likely to get on mosquitoes, cause it catches them when they're flying. Either way, if we don't have the agreement in place, if we ever did want to use aerial spraying without the agreement in place. It would, from the time the council say, yep, make it happen to when they could do it, it would take a couple of weeks, cause they had to get clearance from the FAA. And get all the ducks in the world. This makes it to where. We could, you know, say, hey, we want aerial spraying done and within a time and matter, they'd be able to do the aerial spraying. As they would have the paperwork and the approvals through FAA already completed, so in case we ever do it. It doesn't cost us anything to have the agreement in place. It's just if the council decides, yes, they want us to do aerial spray, we have the capability to do it, so. Like I said, we don't do this. Unless we absolutely have to. This is a last resort situation of aerial spraying because of the cost. Uh to give you a ballpark of it or vector control fee generate, we would be able to do maybe. One spray in a year if we're lucky. And we'd have to have a very good fund balance like carryover from previous year for our vector control. Our vector control fee right now covers our cost of our county, our agreement with the county for their mitigation efforts. For vector control, for mosquito control. And it covers our costs or majority of our costs tied to the truck-based spraying. It doesn't really cover a whole bunch for aerial spraying. I mean, we could do it later on if we had to, or if you adjusted the fee, we could always do that too, but. We, like I said, we have the data there proves uh that our ba- truck-based spraying has been very effective. Like I said, this is just a last resort. If the numbers got all controlled to where we couldn't do something, it might be aerial and the truck base or something, timing wise, so.
It's interesting that it's three thousand three hundred eighty-five acres, right? That are being, effectively being sprayed in this area. That's a lot.
Yep.
But we hope we don't need it.
Yep. Uh like I said, this agreement is for nine thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars. There's a hundred dollar ferrying fee if we team up, if we're doing a aerial spraying at the same time that one of our neighboring cities do. They've split the cost, so it can be another fifty dollars or thirty bucks additional. So with this, we're just looking for approval of this agreement. So we had the ability to do this if the council still chooses they want to do a aerial spray or the mayor indicates that they would like us to do it.
Thoughts guys, and.
I move that we approve this.
He makes a motion?
I'll serve him.
Sarah, it's a second. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Jim, what do you got for an update for us?
Yes, first thing on our list is a continuation of our prior discussion on the two water projects. The construction cost for those project was submitted to the state water commission last Monday for their meeting in. May, April, May, May meeting. As we all know, we were approved of preliminary costs at their last meeting, we have to submit now for the construction costs. So we updated the applications and we set that, set that in for those two projects, so that will be on the agenda. And like I said earlier too, we've got the application pretty well complete. We're waiting on resolution necessity for the local portion of those two projects. That'll be in this week for the public finance authority and then DEQ. That one will have to go before the industrial commission, cause they'll probably be above a million dollars for each. So they have to go in front of the industrial commission for, for their um approval. Uh plant preparation on both those projects is, is progressing. We're gonna meet with Public Works this week to go through some of the existing conditions. And try to determine what they are. We've got some surveying, we've got some old plans, but sometimes it's in the city, Public Works head works. Well, two, Southdale Farms third edition, the plans are, yeah.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Um uh on the water projects, you are still moving forward though, that you will potentially have bids going, bids received before that meeting in May that you can present that, right? What's your timing?
Project schedule, bring it up here. Will, we want to bid the project in, open, open bids in late April and award at the May third meeting. That's what we're shooting for. So uh plans will be out the first weekend, April, April sixthish. Uh open bids three weeks from that date and then approve the plan, the bids at the May third meeting.
With a targeted completion date of.
November.
November.
But you are gonna put a contingency that we are not going to award the bids until we have proper funding with the goal of getting that funding from the industrial or state.
But we should know, we should have an answer from the state water commission in May?
Provided they don't say we need to come back with more concrete numbers. And from my discussions with them, when we do have more, we can, we can talk to them in the period here before the meeting, so. So yes.
All right, thank you.
Yep, uh Southdale Farms third edition is, plans are gonna be out to the developer for review this week. Met with the de-watering contractor last week and they are going to be into Chestnut, Annalyn's and Ironwood um Dream Fields. Hopefully this week. We'll start with the drilling the wells for the neighborhood de-watering project, so. It might not be operational this week, but they're at least gonna get the, get the well drilled with that going, so.
Uh we, we should, so question on that. So should we have at least a, a general idea if it's where the water table level is? And if, if it should make a difference?
We'll know where they encounter water by their initial drilling.
By the next meet, so not by the next meeting, but maybe.
No, we will, but it'll just be matter how much, if they can get the well in production or not.
That's gonna be the question is, well, how deep the water, how deep they have to go to hit water? And if it, when they start pumping, we won't know the results, but we'll know that approximately how deep the water is, so we can start seeing whether it's gonna actually help with the.
Yes, and this should determine if we have to put additional wells into. So I'm hoping in two weeks they'll have completed that work. We'll have an idea where the water level is and if we get the wells producing.
Right, measure to be able to say what the effectiveness might be.
Right.
That's gonna be huge.
Exactly.
So where is this going in that?
Uh it's gonna be by the park. It's on the city-owned parcel by the park.
We gonna, if a, we gonna pump it towards the south of the nature woods yet?
Pump it towards Seventy-Sixth Avenue, yep. Um Lakeview addition, we've been meeting with the developer. We got, just got the petition for improvements. Uh we've been meeting with them on um. Uh part of that project will be constructing a road from Conrout Seventeen to the east north of Casey's. We had talked in the past about our MOU, our MOU with the county and the parcel turnover. Uh the county has a lot north of Casey's, turn that over to the city for right-of-way, for a road to go into the Lakeview addition. And to clean up some access into the Roots addition, so we're working with the design engineers on that one.
So is that a MOU that we will need to review and approve?
Orion, please.
Done last meeting.
I mean, the, 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 for taking over ownership of that.
They will deed it to us, is my understanding.
Oh, okay, all right. So it's, it's not a MOU per se, it's a, it's a deed of that little chunk of.
We, we are, it was already in the MOU that it's on last means, we're covered there. And then the county would deed it. I believe the MOU actually addressed that. They would deed it to the city. Uh once they execute those deeds, then it would be done. And then it would be when we do a future plat in that area, such as Lakeview, whenever they come back with the second addition. Then we can plat that as a road right-of-way instead of a parcel. Um so it'd be, cause it'd be considered, it would be a road.
But in the meantime, that will be a construction road?
No, it'd be, it'd be, it'd be a road.
Well, I know, but it will be, but for this year.
You know, it would most likely be with the Lakeview development, when they're putting in that infrastructure, they'd be putting the permanent infrastructure in for that road, yep. We are still in discussions if it's gonna be a two-year project. That was one thing that was talked about just last Thursday with the developers, if they wanted it to be a two-year. If they did all this year, then it'd be a road done this year, otherwise it'd be next.
If that construction's gonna happen this year.
Yeah. Yep. Um last Monday, the park district opened bids on the Terror Gardens Park. And I believe Monday night, they awarded to Dirt Dynamics. That was the contractor of that one. So that's over in north of Lagoons, east of, east of Prairie View. And then uh the last thing I got is Wall Avenue. We've got some right-of-way that we're working on with the attorney's office. To get some ownership on what the land, who owns the land before we push forth with that, so. We got that to the legal side, so. That's all I've got for you.
So the, the Chestnut, we're gonna get the, we're gonna letters published?
We're going, I was go, I went through the estimate today. We talked about it last Thursday. And we're gonna get that, I'll get that to the, to the city for distribution with the Chestnut Ironwood folks, so. Proposing a rehabilitation project in there, in that area versus a reconstruction, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else, Jim? You guys got any questions for Jim?
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, we'll move on. Brenton, you got the next one?
I just have two items. One is just a reminder, well, both are reminders. One is uh every Friday from three to seven at the fire hall is uh COVID rapid testing events. So if you wanna get tested for it, it'll be done locally here. Uh it's free. Just have to show up, takes a few minutes, they'll do it and then call you back with the results.
I think you have to register online.
Yeah, you could, you're encouraged to register online. Uh I believe if you just show up, you can still get it done.
They prefer you to do it online, so.
Yeah, they prefer that you do it online, uh but like I said, you can still show up and get the testing, is my understanding. Uh and then just a reminder for everybody, March ninth is a special recall election and April twentieth is a special election. Uh we've been working with the county to make sure we have our, all the things ready for that. And I believe we have most, if not all, the workers lined up for that, so. Uh we have, like I said, those will be the ninth, March ninth, so next Tuesday, a week, week from tomorrow. And then April twentieth at the fire hall.
Okay. All right.
And that's it.
Well, let's see, on portfolios, I don't have anything to scroll around. Sarah?
Just uh some really, really fun and.
Uh, just, uh, some really, really fun and invigorating work going on with planning and zoning that falls in, in my realm. And, um, we've, as you can see, had some ordinance updates, you know, getting some things, um, up to snuff that contradicted one another to make things a little more inviting for our residents. Um, spent a lot of time making sure that things are gonna stay nice and beautiful in Horace and I'm pretty excited about that. Um, beyond that, um, just a little bit of follow-up on some comments from the Home Builders Association, making sure that, um, I'm doing my due diligence there. And then obviously wanting to wish luck to all the candidates in the upcoming March ninth election.
Okay, all right. Dave, what do you got?
Uh, the only update I wanted that was brought to my attention by a resident was about the special assessment policy. Uh, we had our public meeting approximately, I think about a month ago, and just wanted to give everybody update that there still is progress being made. We've had two meetings with our, um, core group that is reviewing that. And it is probably gonna be at least another couple of meetings. We do them every couple of weeks so that we can work through things. So I would not expect to see anything or any announcements going out through probably even into potentially April before that's prepared. So that is being worked on. It is being addressed. It's a, it's a large group. There is some significant information in there that we're going through, a lot of detail about all the calculations, methods, communications, all of those types of things. So that will be coming out still in another probably month or longer before we can present the draft to our residents for review, so.
Okay. Chelsea, what do you got?
Uh, not much. I guess I'll just say thanks for the hard work on the special assessment policy. I think that's great, so.
Yep, I agree. It's just one of those things that's been long overdue and it's good to have it.
No, nothing to add, thank you.
Nothing to add, okay. With that, then I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Dave, do the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you all that came tonight. Appreciate your time.